Eight thirty-two. This is the regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen of the Town in New Canaan, Tuesday, February ninth, two thousand twenty-one. First item on our agenda are the last two meetings, budget meetings, January twenty-sixth, January twenty-eighth. Any comments or corrections on the minutes? Kathleen or Nick?
None here.
Just one comment that I think, thank you, Tucker, for doing these minutes. They're fabulous, very comprehensive, really appreciate it.
I move we approve the minutes of those two meetings.
Second.
All in favor? That's unanimous. This is a virtual meeting by Zoom, so public comments will be taken only by email, and we will read them in the course of the meeting or at the end of the meeting. Comments should be sent to un-agenda topics. Comments should be sent to distribution@newcananct.gov, and Tucker will watch for email comments. That brings us to the third item on the agenda, the Bristow fence improvements, and who's doing this? Maria?
Yeah, Maria will take care of that, Kevin. Thank you.
Good morning. Actually, I was just told by Joe that it looks like it might not be broadcasting on Channel seventy-nine, so I just wanted to give a heads up to that as well.
They are on call. We are recording.
Great, excellent.
I'll check with them as well. Thanks.
Thank you. Good morning. Last July, the Board of Selectmen granted approval for Phase One of the Bristo Centennial Master Plan to perform restoration work at Bristol Bird Sanctuary and Wildwood Preserve. The Phase One work, along with additional dredging and pond restoration, has substantially been completed. In order to prepare for spring plantings, it is timely for sections of the existing fence around the perimeter of the park to be repaired or replaced, either due to tree or storm damage or age. In addition, the existing decorative pedestrian gates need to be relocated per the Bristo Centennial Master Plan. The bid was publicly advertised, and three contractors requested copies of the bids, with the only bid received from Gannon Rustic Fence at twenty-nine thousand five hundred and sixteen dollars, with a fifteen percent contingency of four thousand four hundred and twenty-seven dollars and forty cents, for a total of thirty-three thousand nine hundred and forty-three dollars and forty cents. We recommend that the contract be awarded to Gannon Rustic Fence. The funds are currently available.
Thank you, Maria. Any questions for Maria?
We're used to prize if we only get one bid, or?
Well, I do know that the storm definitely impacted things. So we actually had originally looked for a bid opening date on Thursday, but due to the storm, we tried to give everyone as much time as possible until Monday to really make it as fair as possible. But I do know that currently, you know, the weather does impact things.
The interesting thing, Kathleen, was we got requested, we had a request from one of the contractors to extend the bid time because of the storm that came in. So we said yes, and we said we'll extend it to Monday for you. They said, that's fantastic. Thank you very much. And then they didn't bid. So we can't, you know, so we went the extra mile in contacting the bidders, asking what a good time would be given the storm, extended it to that time, and then still, we received the one. Thankfully, Gannon's done fantastic work for us in the past. They're local, which is really nice. They're New Canaan-based, you know? So it's a nice thing to actually have a local contractor working on a local prominent project, so.
What else have they done, Tiger?
I'm sorry, what?
They've actually worked at Bristo before as well. So some of the work that they're doing, they're doing improvements along Old Stanford Road, and it's work that they had done twenty years ago as well. So, you know, it's just time now, some of these sections, but Tiger can probably tell you more what other sections across town that they've worked on.
Right. He did all the initial repairs in Bristo when we first started, kind of with the Conservation Commission working. And then, most recently, he did the guide rail installation over by the powerhouse where we just built the wall. He did that section for us. He's done the entire guide rail section along Saks, along the sidewalk at Saks. He did that. He's done a number of fencing projects for the Parks Department and the Recreation Department. He's been very active in town for quite some time. He did the guide rail installation along the new access road from the high school to Waveney Park that would, that would there. So he's done quite a few projects for us.
Excellent question.
Now, for the questions, I move we approve the request from Public Works to enter into contract with Gannon Fence, as described by Maria.
Second here.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Thank you very much.
Okay, that moves us to, so we have with us today Ray Vergati with Homeland Towers. Remind people that we selected Homeland Towers by RFP in two thousand sixteen, I believe it was, to be our partner in improving our cell phone service in New Canaan by building more towers, which we need to be able to address a number of dead areas and other poor service areas in town. You may recall too that Ray and Manny Vicente, his partner, made some proposals back in two thousand seventeen, and residents said, well, why are you trying to solve the problem down here? Why don't you solve the problem where it's really needed up in the north? So now we have an approved cell tower on Soundview Lane, which Ray is actively working on building. I think the snow's slowing you down a bit, but I think you're about to get your building permit. And in the northwest corner of town, we've, for more than two works have worked on a location on Upper Ponus Ridge Road, next to the reservoir. We actually had spectated out as being on-town right-of-way. And we're trying to move that idea along, but just about a year ago, the resident of the eighteen thirty-seven Ponus Ridge is the address? Decided to sell their house and it became available to buy. And we started talking, they actually visited the town, and the town really didn't want to buy a house, since we already have too many buildings. And, but we were successful in getting an investor to buy the property as an LLC. And the LLC proposes to host a cell tower, a public safety tower. I just want to remind people that in two thousand sixteen or seventeen, the town was working on a public safety tower at the bottom of the reservoir. It was going to cost us three hundred thousand dollars. We have a desperate need for a permanent public safety tower in the northwest part of town. We withdrew the proposal after the Stanford, I don't know, it was the mayor of the P and Z Commission, opposed the tower because it wouldn't benefit Stanford residents at all. It was only going to be a radio tower for our fire police and EMS. And so now this, we have a temporary antenna for the northwest corner on a barn, and, but that's not a permanent solution, so we've been working with Ray to move forward a proposal for this private property. And I don't want to tell the whole story. I'll introduce Ray Vergati and let him explain what we're proposing.
Sure. Thank you for selecting Morninghand. Good morning, everybody. My name is Ray Vergati. I am with the company called Homeland Towers. We are a tower developer out of Danbury, Connecticut. What Homeland does is we simply build the infrastructure, a critical infrastructure these days, for the carriers, be it the Verizon, the AT&amp;T, the T-Mobiles of the world. In addition, we've come to learn over the years that these facilities are lifeline for public safety as well. So we're finding that a number of times when we build these facilities, that public safety, be it fire, police, EMS, look to co-locate their antennas on these facilities. As the first selectman mentioned, Homeland had partnered with the town through an RFP process. Back in two thousand sixteen, we were awarded that RFP. And yes, that RFP basically was to work on any municipal properties. As first selectman Morninghand just alluded to, that they want, the town want to really try to solve the puzzle piece in the northeast and the northwest section, which there were no available municipal properties. So Homeland Security Ground Lease in the northeast section, we are in the process of getting ready to start construction very soon. We're very excited about that, very hard, a long project, doesn't happen overnight. But we're excited to bring both cell service and public safety to the northeast section. The other puzzle piece was the northwest section. So Homeland has always looked at this location. In addition, the town had hired an independent consultant several years ago by the name of Cityscape. And Cityscape did a comprehensive plan for the town, and also confirmed, yes, the northeast section, a site was needed, but a site was also needed. And then, I'm sorry, northeast and the northwest section. So we had approached a number of landlords over the years. This eighteen thirty-seven Ponus Ridge Road, we had approached a prior landlord for a ground lease to secure. And eventually, as Selectman Morninghand just mentioned, it was purchased within the past year. And we are in the process of finalizing our ground lease with the owner of eighteen thirty-seven Ponus Ridge Road. Our intent is to move forward with the town with the Communications License Agreement. Homeland Towers has worked on the agreement with the town attorney, attorney Doug Lamont. So we're looking to sign a lease with the town, have the ground lease in place, and the expectation would be to take it through the approval process. We're also very hopeful, we're speaking to a carrier at the moment, who's working on securing funding for this particular site. So in addition to the town going through the zoning process, as basically an anchor slash applicant of Homeland Towers, we would look to have a carrier onboard as well. It's a desperately needed area. You folks live there, you travel there, you play there. I don't have to explain the critical need for these sites, given the outages, the storms, and so forth. Our hope is to secure the ground lease, secure the lease with the town, go forward with the zoning, and be able to provide public safety and cell service in the northwest section.
Thank you, Ray. I'll just say a few more words before we open to questions. So the arrangement is for the the ground lease to be with Homeland Towers and the property owner. The town, as Ray explained, will bring it to the Siding Council as a carrier. And, but, in order to entice the property owner, we had to agree to a small upfront payment, like Ray is making a small upfront payment. And then our team said, well, what if a carrier doesn't agree to be on the tower? We have a, I'll discuss this with the Board of Finance tonight, we have an obligation to pay rental payments for, after the tower is constructed. So basically, Homeland Towers has to spend probably seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to build this location before our obligation to pay rent arises. That's a future obligation, and one that's very remote. Ray and I had a good conversation last week with the carrier, and I'm optimistic, as Ray is, that we'll get a carrier as the carriers realize how important this location is for both public safety and cell service, and cell service for not only northwest New Canaan, but northeast Stanford. I've discussed this location with Mayor Martin in Stanford and the North Stanford Association. So I think, and most of the neighbors know about this location, Ray, and we've talked to neighbors. So I think most people in town understand the need for cell towers. So with that, I would ask Kathleen and Nick if you have questions for Ray or me. What we're approving today is, again, a, what's the name of it?
License.
Well, actually, the ground lease is between Homeland Towers and the property owner. We are a carrier agreement, as if Verizon or AT&amp;T was signing up to be on the tower. And then we also have an option agreement with the property owner in the unlikely event that no carrier ever came in the next three or four years after the tower is built. We need this as a public, permanent public safety tower. So in that unlikely event, the carriers do not come on, we would end up with a public safety tower only at a payment of fifty thousand dollars. The public safety tower we were looking to build, owned by the town, was going to cost three hundred thousand dollars. So, all in all, I think this is a necessary way to move this forward, and we perhaps will use this structure in other locations in town. For now, we need to get this particular location on its way to the Siding Council.
I would like to add on that regarding the zoning process. We'll definitely go the Siding Council route if we are able to get a carrier to sign and come onboard. There's been discussion with our zoning attorney that if it's just a town, we may still go the Siding Council route. We may go the local route through the P and Z there in town. We haven't decided that yet, but we're just waiting for the carrier to commit to us, and it would definitely be the Siding Council route. Happy to talk about the process on that, if anybody has a question on the Siding Council process.
So Kevin, on the option that's triggered by the termination of the ground lease? The license option.
Terminate, terminate, if Homeland Towers didn't get a carrier.
Right, they terminated.
After investing seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars and they walked away. I don't think Ray plans to walk away from investment. And there's an expression in the industry, steel in the air. Carriers are much more likely to come to a tower that already exists than one that isn't planning and takes a while to get through the Siding Council. So.
I gotta believe this is probably never going to happen, right?
Well, that's why I tried to convince Stuart, so have been and others that, you know, but they said, let's buy for the possibility. So that's, at the last minute in the past few weeks, we've negotiated this option agreement with the LLC owner of the property, and.
I mean, this is, for me, this is a new wrinkle, but it's not, I don't think it's problematic, because I think it's an event that will never take place.
Kathleen?
Sure. First of all, thank you, Kevin and Ray. Appreciate all the work that's gone into doing this. And obviously, I agree, you know, it's a public safety issue, and so I'm supportive. But just a couple of questions, if you don't mind. So the property that this will be going on to, this is, this property is a taxable property, will be actually also having property taxes on this?
Yes, it is. It's a rental home that the purchaser, the new owner has fixed. It was actually built by, it's mid-century modern. It was in quite disrepair, and so there's a renter there now, but it will be on the tax rolls. It's conceivable, this is a philanthropic investor. It's conceivable in the future the property may be a, maybe a common land trust property. But since it has a residence, and it's unlikely the home will be torn down.
Okay. All right. Thank you. A question on the Communications License Agreement, if I may, just clarification. And I just want to understand, I think I do, but that the licensor is actually Homeland Tower. The licensee is the town of New Canaan, is that correct?
Just like, just like it was AT&amp;T or Verizon or T-Mobile.
And so it just goes on within the document, just to say that the town, the licensee, obviously, is going to be paying the monthly fee to Homeland Towers. And to your point, Kevin, that's until the provider actually comes onboard, so I understand that. It goes on to say in terms of the responsibilities, is that the licensee, the town acknowledges that Homeland Tower's ability to construct, operate, and maintain the site is contingent upon the licensors, that Homeland Tower's ability to obtain any and all governmental approvals is defined below. So that's going to be the process, is that Homeland Towers will get the government approvals? Seeking them.
Yeah, the soft costs upfront to get a tower approved are probably six figures, I imagine. Lawyers' fees, engineers' fees, they've got to, they got to show it to the Siding Council in all of its detail.
Right.
It'll probably take six months to get through this, through the process?
Yeah.
Or more?
I'm sure. I'm just wondering if there's a mix-up of the, it then goes on to say that not only will the licenser obtain the governmental approvals, the next section says that the town shall obtain the government approvals. And so I'm just wondering if there's just a wording change there. It says that the town shall submit in writing all plans for installation modifications or changes. It says for the town's written approval. It seems like we're submitting for our own approval. I just think there might be a mix-up between licensee and licensor.
A carrier has to, has to be in the mix with the tower company. A tower company is really just a, a personal property owner.
Yeah.
They facilitate carriers to be on a tower. But the Siding Council requires a carrier, and we qualify as a carrier, we believe, to bring it to the Siding Council. And, and so therefore, we have our own obligation to be in the process, not just Homeland Towers, bring it to the Siding Council.
All right. And do we ask for the licensors or Homeland Tower's approval? Again, the language, I think I'm just going to cite the Section Five BI, and there are some other sentences before. It just seems that there's might be a, just a, it just could help out. You guys are the attorneys, so you know better than I, so.
Actually, we can raise that with Doug Lamont, the attorney. Doug has spent a lot of time on this in the last two years.
All right.
Get to where we are. So if there's any, any question about the.
Two words that might be, it may be. So if I may, just with your permission, I'll have a quick conversation with him, but.
Yeah, I had no problems with the agreement. I would just say, again, you know, thanks, thanks to you, Kevin, and to Ray. I mean, this is a huge development for, for the town. I think, Ray, you use the term desperate with respect to the communications in the northwest portion of the town. I think that's an appropriate term under the circumstances. And I would just say, Kevin, you use the term philanthropic. So, you know, to the owner of, of this parcel, thank you to that individual or individuals.
I'd also mention Joe Rucci is the agent for the LLC, and Joe is the lawyer, and Amy Zavatek are the lawyers for the property owner. Joe had done the Country Club Tower for the Country Club back fifteen years ago, and so Joe is very familiar with the need for cell towers. I would also comment that this tower will be very inconspicuous, like the one plant for Soundview Lane. It will be either a pine, what do you call it, monopine like Soundview Lane, or possibly more like the tower up at Silver Hill Hospital, which is very discreet. And so I think this really should not be a problem for any, and actually, the location was chosen because it really is not within the view sight of any neighbor. And so it works. People from Stanford really will have no, they're so far away, they really, keep in mind, the other proposed tower for the Town in New Canaan was going to be on the Stanford side of the reservoir. And so this is well hidden from the Stanford side of the. The.
Yeah, I've driven by it a few times. It's a great location. It really is. It's unobtrusive.
Viewable from the road at all? Will the tower be viewable from the road?
Well, actually, that's such a rolling road, you'd have to want to stop and look at it. It's a treat area, and actually, you know, directly across the street on Aquarian's property, there are ninety-foot white pines. That's one of the reasons it won't be seen by the Stanford residents. But it's on, it's in a grove of trees. As, you know, most cell towers are, you want to sight in a, in a area where they won't stand out, so.
So it's on the east side of Ponus?
East side of Ponus.
East side, yeah.
So I'm very pleased to finally get, it was a challenge last year with COVID to move this forward. Very pleased to get to this point, so Ray can start working out other locations, which we're working on. And we probably will be coming forward in not too distant future with news on that front.
So this will, this will help us in terms of public safety in the entire northwest corner of?
This is a large area. Keep in mind that radios in vehicles, fire trucks and ambulances, police cars will work in that part. But if a police officer steps out of his car and tries to use his hand healthy, you know, before we have the temporary antenna, they would get no reception at all. So it's a dangerous, it was a dangerous location. We need a permanent solution. That was currently a five-year lease and could be extended, but we need a permanent location for public safety radio.
I have worked with your public safety consultant, the inventory, with Stuart. And I believe right now the town is planning to install two omni antennas, one at the very top of the facility, and then one at a height of roughly sixty feet. And in addition to those two antennas, the town would be installing two microwave dishes that are two foot each in diameter.
This is part of our build-out, Kathleen, when you were on the town council, we approved a two-point-one million dollar upgrade of our public safety radios, and we've, we now have five locations where we multicast rather than just one broadcasting from the top of Waveney Water Tank. So there was three hundred thousand dollars budgeted for this location for the tower that didn't succeed.
Right. Well done.
Thank you. So I would ask, I make a motion to approve the Communications License Agreement between the Town and Canaan and Homeland Towers, and the separate option agreement between the Town and Canaan and eighteen thirty-seven LLC.
Second here.
Further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you, Ray.
Thank you all for your time. Enjoy the snow today, and enjoy the snow on Thursday and Friday, and beyond. Thank you all. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, Andrew Brooks, our pressure, front and center.
There.
And Linda, is Linda co-presenting this?
Yes, he will be. And Linda, I mean, I'm happy to let you take this off if you'd like, or I'm happy to start.
Go ahead, Andy.
Sure. So, you know, we're here today just to provide an update on some of our efforts to develop RFPs for both comprehensive banking services, as well as for savings and investment account services. And, you know, this has been a collective effort. Linda and I are co-chairing a working group that we've assembled. We have our town administrator on it, we have a member of the Board of Finance on it, we have our tax collector on it, other key stakeholders to ensure that we're getting all the services that we need. You know, just, you know, a little bit of history, the last time we did a banking services RFP was back in two thousand twelve, I believe. Kathleen, you were involved in that process at the time, and this was before my time in this role. But, you know, we felt it's best practice to go out to the market every so often. This was something that, you know, I've wanted to do for the last few years, and Linda, you know, as our new CFO, showed a tremendous interest in doing this. It is a lot of work. It does require, you know, a lot of effort once, you know, the RFP process is over, just to implement it. And so we wanted to be extra careful and methodical with how we went about doing this. So what you've been provided is a copy of both the comprehensive services RFP. We currently work with Webster, but we'd make this available to all area banks. We include, you know, we updated all the criteria that we're looking for. We've aligned it with the GFOA's standards. And then we've also sent across a smaller RFP, like we're calling it, to obtain better yields on our current cash that's sitting at Webster. You know, historically, the Webster money market account has been earning great interest rates and has afforded a hundred percent collateralization of our funds, which means that our funds are fully protected in the event that Webster Bank were to go under. And that's not an easy term to receive, so that is a core component of our, of both proposals, actually, is that we're focusing on that safety component. That, by and large, was what the Board of Finance cares the most about, and I think most Canaanites care about. But secondary to that is obtaining better yields, and as we know from the pandemic, interest rates are at historic lows. Treasuries have dropped to historic lows, so yields have taken a bit of a hit. But, you know, we feel that doing this fair, transparent process, seeking out bids, we should be able to improve the rates that we're currently getting from Webster on some of our general fund cash. You know, but it's a balancing act. We want to maintain, you know, obviously, that safety component and the convenience of having our cash in as few accounts as possible. You know, a few years ago, we had over fifty accounts. We're now down to like twenty-five accounts, which is still a lot of accounts to manage and maintain eyeballs on. But at the same time, we don't want to be so concentrated that we miss out on realizing better yields if they're out there. So anyway, Linda, happy to, you know, hand this off to you if you want to add anything before we take any questions.
No, I don't have anything to add. The selectmen have both documents in front. Our plan is to obviously go post those bids through the various media outlets. And then we will have the process of accepting the bids, reviewing the bids, and then, once the process is complete, we will come back to the Board of Selectmen with our findings and recommendations. And the Board of Selectmen will, like they did last time, make a. Make either go with our recommendation or have additional discussions. And then we will eventually enter into an agreement, into a new agreement. It could be with the same bank, it could be with a new bank. And then once we have that bank designated, we will then we will then go through a process of having a contractual agreement. Which is separate from the RFP because the RFP is typically a list of things that we would like you to offer, but then once we've narrowed it down. To a particular bank we want to do business with, then we will have those. A banking contract with them outlining, you know, what are the fees you're going to charge us, what are the things you're not going to charge us for, what are the services you're going to provide, the timeliness. And so forth. And so those are the documents that you have, and we'd be happy to get your feedback and input. I shared this with the Board of Finance, I believe, last month. And we had some great discussions. Todd is a champion, would really like to move this forward. The Audit Committee is also a group that has said, you know, this is something that we need to do, and they're supportive. Of having this review process and just seeing what's out there. It really is best practice. We may end not changing banks, but I think it's always good to go out and see what opportunities exist. And so we'd really like to get your input as far as the process. If you have any comments on the documents that you have. Would welcome those. We did have Doug, he's been busy for us. Doug Lamonti has looked at the document. We mentioned Bob Hamel on the Board of Finance. We've had work sessions with him. He's reviewed it, given us input and so forth, so. We've had as many eyes as we can take a look at this document. We did follow the GFOA guiding principles. On RFPs, and so I also included a review, so as we were going through this process. I will say that the twenty twelve document that we mirrored this after was a very comprehensive document. It was extremely well done. So there wasn't a lot of changes that we incorporated in this one, maybe just updating. For the times that we're in, but the twenty twelve RFP document was extremely comprehensive, and it met all the GFOA requirements as well as this one. So that's that's all I have by way of comments on this.
So this is going to run through twenty twenty three, Linda? June thirty of twenty twenty three?
Yes, ideally, if we stick to our timeline, we're looking at a July one transition period, and then two years after that. With with municipal banking, it's kind of tricky because our our tax collection lags, and this was the same thing in twenty twelve. We will transfer over all of our other services, but the tax piece lagged a year because that doesn't transition. You can't transition mid-year, that'd be January. So that's when that that account moves over, and with the same thing with Webster, there was a lag, a year lag with moving the tax collectees in Webster before that.
Can you remind me? Sorry. When's the last time we did this? I should remember, but.
Twenty twelve.
Twenty twelve, twenty twelve?
Twenty twelve.
Well, I mean, I think I think this is appropriate, and as you pointed out, best practices, and I've reviewed the. RFP and related documentation. It looks it looks good.
Kathleen?
Thank you. Actually, I also concur. I was the the twenty twelve initial author of the RFP. I will tell you that the the most difficult part is is the actual execution, which I was not a part of. But so that I certainly appreciate what that process takes place once you select. Whether you retain Webster or another bank. If I could just raise just two points, one on the banking service, the other on the short term savings investment. On the on the banking services RFP, also very well done. I would just think, and I looked at the GFOA checklist as well. Just maybe three things quickly. One, just sort of an update. I I noticed when we go through our budget agreement, it was all a budget. We get charged a fair amount in credit card fees, as I recall. So any use by our taxpayers in terms of paying for their taxes on their credit card or what have you, there tends to be an increase of fees. Or whether there are fees for recreational programs and so forth. And I just wonder if we could, if you would kindly consider putting in the RFP really a specifics about, and there is, there is in the checklist, there's a payment card services piece. Really kind of, because I think that is a competitive advantage if we look at those financial institutions who can provide you lower fees on credit card payments. So that's just something to consider. I don't. I did not see that transfer from the checklist into the RFP unless I missed it, but that would be that would be one thing I would recommend adding. The second thing is on cybersecurity. Again, this is kind of an update from twenty twelve, but I think that it's something that we want to assure ourselves that the bank. Has proper cybersecurity risk management controls in place. And then the last thing I would just, again, just a suggestion, not required, but. An introduction to in the start of the RFP, really talking three sentences, no more. About the community background, including population, et cetera. I think is would would be, I think, worthwhile. And then just quickly on this, unless we're having a separate discussion on the short term savings account, are we, or this all together?
No, you can go ahead.
On the short term savings account, so. I know we say a minimum of ten million. What is your, in the lowest possible month of the year, what is the. Cash average cash balance for the town? And how much would this ten million be as a percentage of that?
So.
So with, go ahead, Andy.
No, I'm sorry, Linda, you go ahead.
No, I was going to say, on the tablet, we also included a cash report. Which kind of shows, I think it's item five D or five C. Which kind of shows our ups and downs, and we took Webster Money Market Account, which is our main cash. That's the majority of our cash is there. So we just showed you that to kind of see the ebbs and flows, just to kind of see, you could see what our average balances is. And the ten million, we use that benchmark as a minimum amount, and so if we have something favorable. We could do ten, we could do fifteen, but at minimum, we were looking at at ten initially.
So I guess.
Yeah, no, that that sums it up. We, you know, as you can see from that sheet, we never drop below an average of thirty five million is like the low end. Now, I will say, though, back in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, we did drop below one million because of a change in the teacher contracts. We ended up having to pay teacher salaries in June for the whole summer. That was a change rather than over the course of the summer. So we had to make a giant lump sum payment of like seven or eight million. And so, but over the last couple of years, we've, by concentrating our cash in fewer accounts, we've been able to maintain this balance, and given this is the only account that offers us full collateralization. We've tried to keep as much as possible in this account. So I would say for the last two years, we've never gone below thirty five million. So we felt ten million, you know, we were comfortable with that level or potentially going above that. You know, and the purpose of this account is not to lock the money up for too long. We do intend to use the this cash to potentially pay bills or, you know, if the library or other capital project expenses come up. We typically pay for those with our cash and then bond later to reimburse ourselves. So so we do want to make sure, you know, maintain liquidity with this cash.
And and the, thank you. I appreciate it. I'm just looking at those last two pages of I originally only got in the first page, so that's, thank you for that. And and the, again, for the short term account, so the Jany Montgomery and the UBS, I guess, a little over ten million themselves. So it seems like what they are doing for you in terms of money management. Is pretty similar to what you're asking for in this particular, right? It's it's US Treasuries, Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac, US government secured securities. As well as CDs, I suppose, or would you consider them different in terms of what you're trying to achieve?
I would say that there is a difference. What Jenny and UBS do is provide us with longer term investment. Security options. So where, you know, our average duration in those accounts is, you know, between two to three years. So that cash is kind of locked up, and we don't day trade, you know, we buy and hold through maturity to ensure we don't, you know, take any losses on on any of the bonds, you know, given the market price fluctuates. So this pot of money would be more for like savings or very short term securities, less than six months, so that. We can still have that liquidity within the short term rather than having it locked up in the long term. And so that's why for this RFP, we're not only looking at, you know, broker dealers or registered investment advisors. But also at financial institutions, you know, we became aware of a particular product, you know, I ICS and CDARs accounts. That allow FDIC insurance to cover everything, and you can kind of skip the collateralization piece. Which, you know, it would be a huge benefit. So we wanted to open this up to those kinds of accounts, and Jenny and UBS don't offer those kinds of options.
Okay, last thing I would say is that probably six months is is too short in terms of any one particular security if the average. Allow you to get a CD that went up to twelve months, such that when you put the portfolio together, you're probably running at about a six month average. I think you're. You're going to get better opportunity or yields if you take advantage of the.
Right, great.
So.
I think it's a daylight, E A dash L I T. Yeah.
Okay, sorry, I was confused. No, I agree. Kathleen, that's something that I've been thinking about is, do we allow for up to twelve months that the average is that six month period? So I'll take that away, and I think I think that's a great suggestion.
That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Okay, we're not voting on this. This was an update and. Go to the Board of Finance, and then they'll come back to us with a recommendation. So thank you, Andrew. Thank you, Linda. Moving on to what's our next? We have an appointment. Mr. James Bash is with us. And. We have an alternate they can see on the Planning and Zoning Commission. For a two year term ending December one, two thousand twenty one, you all have James's. CV on your tablets, and you know James, so. Any questions for James before we take a vote on his appointment?
Well, no questions. Just want to thank you, James, for stepping up, you know, PNC is. Those folks work pretty hard, so we really appreciate, you know, your service.
No, my pleasure, Nick. I look forward to it.
I'll add also, thank you, James, for putting your, and I know I spoke with, I corresponded with John Goodwin, the chairman of the commission, and he said he'd also had an engagement with you and supports your candidacy. So that's good for me. And I think you also spoke with Dan Radman as well.
Yes, yeah, Dan's a friend, yep.
So you have a good, you have a good sense of the the requirement, the requirements of serving on PNC, so I appreciate. Your due diligence on this as well.
Oh, thanks. Thank you, Kathleen.
I'd also like to thank you, James, for your willingness to serve. It's a great commission, and. I therefore move, we appoint James Bash to the alternate position on the Planning and Zoning Commission for a two year term ending December one, two thousand twenty one.
Second here, second here.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Congratulations. Welcome, James.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
I appreciate it. Get to the fee review. So during the budget season, we really didn't see anything that could. Change that would increase revenues to any significant extent. You know, these fees are not really. They're designed to cover the cost for the most part of various departments, some are traditional. Anyway, but the the town code requires, we're selecting to do an annual review of all of our fees, so I thought it's an appropriate time to do it in the budget season. We will look at individual fees as they come up through the through the year with recreation and others who. Who are proposing adjustments based upon what their commissions may recommend, but. So. We have various department heads here to answer questions. I suppose we can just go through the the memos that. Were submitted in the budget process, the first one being from Public Works. And Tiger's here to address any questions. I I noticed that some of these fees haven't been changed since two thousand fifteen, but. We made a major change last year on the transfer station. Resident. Dump sticker, dump is how we want to refer to it, and that was rather successful, especially being able to do it in the age of COVID primarily electronically. And. So any questions for the for Tiger on? DPW fees?
Yeah, I mean, I think, Kevin, it, you know, you you mentioned the fact that these fees, we're not, the town's not trying to make money off these fees. We're using these fees to to support the. The budgets of the various, you know, town town bodies, departments, Public Works being probably first and foremost, and I think the other. Guiding principle is that, you know, we don't want to be an outlier with respect to our peer towns. I think in Fairfield County, and so I think, you know, to the extent that we are an outlier in in one particular. Fee, we just have to understand why that is, and by outlier, I mean either much higher or much lower. Than our, you know, other folks in Fairfield County.
I would also, I would also mention, I thank the department heads for putting these memos together. We did last year. And Tiger does a particularly good format of. Scheduling when we first have the fees and what the fee history increase has been.
Right.
It's a good tool for the department heads to manage their own fees with their boards and commissions if applicable, so that. So do you want to run through and see if we have any particular questions or comments, or do you feel the need to? Do you have particular questions, Kathleen? And Nick, do you?
Just just a quick comment and maybe just one question. So thank you. Also, just looking for the fees, I appreciate the format, and I also appreciate the copies of the other towns and so forth. And I know that we don't stand out on any, is my understanding is we don't stand out on any of the fees. As Nick said, we're sort of coming, you know, come right in there. Is there any that that you think should require a change potentially or consideration, say, a year from now? Tiger?
I'm sorry.
Tiger, go ahead. I mean, you know, in some cases, people were commenting that in the in the in the time of COVID, we don't want to be changing, increasing things such as the Health Department, restaurants and that type of thing, so that.
I completely agree. I'm just thinking, is there any that you would think in a normal environment that maybe in twelve months from now, we we ought to consider?
At present, no, I think we're we're right in the middle. We we do contact the surrounding towns, see exactly where we are. And we try to hit the sweet spot being in the middle. We don't like to be cost prohibitive, and also we take a. A real hard look at what the effort is on some permits. You know, you mentioned the one on the sewer disconnect hasn't been changed. But for that is, we want to be aware of the disconnection for obvious reasons. And then it really comes down to one member of our staff going out, taking a look at the disconnect. And then documenting it and then leaving. So it's not a large amount of effort. So if we make it cost prohibitive. We'd be we'd be running the risk of not being aware of it. So I'd rather be on the low side and be aware of it versus be on the high side. And cause someone to possibly not come in for the disconnect permit. We do have the only outlier per se, but it's a it's a philosophical is is on a sewer connection fee. Some charge you an exorbitant amount of money for for that, but they also have plants that are nearing capacity. And are trying to build in on that rate, but. That, again, those fees vary from where we are, where we feel that we're we're. More suited towards development and others that are almost cost prohibitive to say the tune of five thousand dollars per connection. Well, five thousand dollars per connection, you know, on a multi unit development, it might be cost prohibitive for that development to go, you know, come into play, so. We we take a look at it annually, and at present, I think that we're we're in a really nice spot. We were very proactive on our road opening permits. You'll see that one hasn't changed in a while because we were very proactive at the time. We followed suit with Norwalk. And given what we see as far as our restoration numbers are, we don't feel that we need to move that number either. We were we were very ahead of the curve at the time because. That was our biggest problem back in twenty ten, say, as we were in the middle of repaving all of our roads. That was our biggest headache, so to speak. So we were proactive then, and I don't think we need to change that either at present.
One of the biggest, and I don't think Steve's on the call, but I noticed the tennis guest fee, or I'm sorry, tennis court permit fee, which is new, which is going to bring in about $16,000.
Yeah, we're not, we're not teeing up that for approval yet, Steve. When is the, you put that in the budget, but it's got to go through the Parking Recreation Commission for a recommendation and then to.
We have something to go through the budget of the Board of Finance and the Town Council. And the commission's got to make a decision on whether they're going to charge the fee for the high school courts or not. We'll bring that, we'll bring that forward to you in probably March.
Yeah, I would, I would, you know, some people have expressed opposition to that fee. I think just like with the pool, to some extent, you have a fee to regulate the usage as opposed to raising revenue. Regulating usage, same thing with parking fees. And we don't do it so much as to raise money as to regulate usage.
Correct.
So. I also would comment, you know, all these fee memos are available to the public. If the public has comments about fees or gets annoyed by particular fees, we welcome comments. And that would help. Most people don't pay attention when fees come up for renewal or increase. But I think a lot of work went into preparing these memos. And we ought to, we ought to get the benefit of as much input and thinking as we can. I would, you know, some people are on this call and kind of reluctantly, I know that Jen has other things to do. Jen, the Health Department fees are not recommended to be increased, again, because of COVID and to help our restaurants and other establishments that pay fees to the Health Department. So if anybody has any questions for Jen, I would ask them to raise them now, otherwise Jen can go to more important things.
Go to more important things, Jen.
And we've had a lot of discussion about parking fees. Stacy and Tucker have been working on parking fees. Our experiment with free parking for workers downtown is moving along, I think, successfully.
Very successfully.
They say you can determine anything in this time of COVID, whether it's the right answer right now, but it seems to be working. And other areas, you know, Brian's Building Department fees are important. They, you know, we spent a lot of time out inspecting projects. And I didn't realize we have a penalty fee for not, for doing work without a permit. And we definitely give no refunds after CO is issued. So I learned a lot from these memos myself. Any comments on the other memos? I think Planning and Zoning primarily looked at what comparable towns charge. We want, as Nick mentioned, we want to remain competitive with our neighbors. And we're fortunate to have a lot of development going on in New Canaan. And but someone's got to pay the staff. And so, thank you, Lynn, for your memo.
Quick question on the, I don't know if this is under Brian or on the inland wetlands fee schedule. Just curious on the cleaning out or dredging of one's pond, for instance. It's $600, for instance, for dredging of a half acre. Is that, that's a fee to the homeowner to have their pond dredged? Or is that actually, it also includes the costs?
Kathleen was at the counter and she's just going to jump into the meeting right now. So she'll answer your question.
Oh, okay. Great.
Yeah, actually, Brian, I was, one, I didn't realize we charged a demolition fee.
Yes.
So a building can be costly just to demolish.
It's a nominal fee, in my opinion. It's $565 all in for the Health Department and the Building Department. It still does require an inspection. I inspect, it has to be down, clean and filled. And then I send Sebby an email and Sebby takes it off the tax roll. So it does require quite a bit of processing on the permit issuance side, and then it requires one inspection.
Anybody see any fees that want to abolish? Just kidding. Kathleen, join us. Any other, any other questions for?
Kathleen's joining in a second. Just give her a second.
Bethany, you don't have any fees in Human Services?
I have that $130 seasonal flu vaccine fee, which we have kept since 2007. We just need to keep it at that price because that's what, to be competitive with CVS and Walgreens.
Don't we charge that at Medicare and insurance company?
We do charge that, but then there are CVS and Walgreens, they will not take children. They only go 18 and up. And so I do get, we take nine years old and up. So we get that. And we get the public coming in. They'd rather have it done. They've been doing it for years with Human Services and they just want to come in and get their shot through us. So they have to pay out of pocket. And we give them a reimbursement receipt. It's all legit. They get reimbursed. So we just try to keep it competitive. Kids looking back to college.
You know, the COVID-19 vaccination is free from the federal government, but many providers are charging administrative fee to administer and charging the insurance companies and Medicare Medicaid for that. So we're not charging a fee at that.
Looks like we have Kathleen there.
Hi there. Did you have a question? I'm sorry, stepped out for a second and then the question came up. Was it, can I answer something for you?
Sure. The other Kathleen, Kathleen and I always get each other's email. So it's been a while. Hi Kathleen. Just a question on the dredging and pond cleaning and so forth. Is that, the fee is actually just to apply for the permit to dredge one's pond on a private property? Or you actually provide the service?
The, there's a application fee associated with all permits for inland wetlands, whether it's a pond dredging or construction activities in the review area. So the service, if you will, is the review of the application and any technical corrections or revisions that we want to make. And then also the commission review as well. And then ongoing beyond, the application fee is inspections, field inspections that are required in order to make sure that compliance is occurring with the particular application. And then on the backend, closing out that open wetland permit, which does get attached to the person's land record.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, great.
Anything else? Any other questions?
I think it was very helpful, Kevin. The departments did a great job breaking down, as you pointed, you know, putting out the history of the fees and how we stand vis a vis other towns. So, well done.
Okay, we will move on then. This is the last item on the agenda, Selectmen's Comments. I would just note that we made a call last night with our latest information about the COVID testing and the COVID vaccinations. It's great to have the Lapham Center start tomorrow with 65-year-olds, although we still have some 75-year-olds in the pipeline. And anybody over 75, please call either Human Services or the Health Department to get an appointment. Also, the Public Health Department, Connecticut Health Department issued a long memo overnight that indicated they finally figured out how to address some of the problems that have been happening with the allocation of vaccines, where they've, they've had people using VAMs. And they've changed that. They're only going to allow people to order through the Health Department. And they're also addressing the fact that some providers have been giving intentionally, knowingly, giving Connecticut doses to residents of New York State and stuff. And since the doses are scarce, it's appropriate that they restrict that to Connecticut residents, unless they're first responders or employees that work in towns in Connecticut. So I don't think I have any other comments. Nick or Kathleen, which one?
No, you're.
No comments here.
I think that ends our regular meeting. And thank you all. Thank you all, the department heads for joining us.
Motion.
I will move to adjourn at 9:32. One hour. Thank you.
Second, Kathleen?
All in favor?
Thank you.
See you soon.
Thanks, everybody.